Good evening. This is the Wabash City School Board of Education meeting. It's Monday, October 7th at 6 o'clock. Roll call.
Jason Frye is absent.
Okay, having a quorum, I call the meeting to order. Will you please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wabash City Schools provides irrelevant and rigorous education funded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career ready for success in the global community. Welcome. There are no recognitions tonight, but we do have a revision. It's to approve revision to item 4.b to include Brody Cook.
So moved.
All in favor of accepting your revision, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on an agenda item? Okay. Item H, the consent agenda. We have minutes from September 16th, 2024. Some claims, donations. We have $1,000 from the Community Foundation of Wabash County for the WHS College and Career Fair, and we have some financials.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
First, we'd like to thank the Community Foundation for their donation to help out with our college and career fair. Our financials tonight, we normally do not have financials at the first board meeting, but last board meeting, we did not get the August financials in, so we are going to go over those tonight. We're going to start with our revenue and expense summary. Revenue was slightly lower than what we had projected. This is due to a decrease in grant reimbursements. We know that our ESSR funds are dwindling off. We haven't had until September 30th to spend those, so like I said, we're going to see that, see our revenue starting to go down just a bit. Our accounts payable expenses were quite a bit higher than projected. This was really because our commercial and workers' comp insurance policies renewals were paid in August, and last year we paid those in September. So over the course of these two months, we're going to kind of see those offset. Our projections for September will be higher because we were assuming we would be paying those in September. Those insurances were also a little bit higher. They were about $210,000, and that's up by about $28,000. Our salary expenses were a bit lower than what we had projected. When you look at the number for this year compared to last year, August was a three-pay month this year, and last year it was only a two-pay month, and September was a three-pay month last year, and it'll be a two-pay month this year. So those again will kind of offset each other. We were projected to have a net loss of about $380,000. We ended up with a net loss of about $517,000. We always know that when we have a three-pay month, we will most likely have a net loss. We're confident that we should make up part of those, that loss during the month of September. Our key fund balances. Our ed fund continues to be at about $1.25 million. Operations fund is very close to where it was last year at this time, when you factor in the remaining tax anticipation warrants. The upside is that last year, our entire December tax draw was used to pay our tax anticipation warrant, whereas this year, we will be able to pay that warrant and we will get some funds back. So for the remainder of the year, we do really need to be tight with our operational spending. We really are only spending on needs. Anything that is considered a want is going to have to wait. Our rainy day fund has not changed from last month to this month, but it does look a little bit better than last year at this time. One thing to remind you, when you look at our overall key funds, last year at this time, the key fund balance was negative $123,000, and at the end of August this year, our total of our key funds was a positive $730,000. Any questions on those?
Question on the comment you made about the decrease in grant reimbursements, ESSR. Is that taken into consideration in future monthly projections?
I do not believe it has been. So, no, it has been, because we thought we were going to end probably in August, July or August, so some of these have already been factored in.
So future months, starting in September, the projections will assume that there won't be any reimbursements?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then the next thing we will look at, if I can get back to my sheet, is our appropriation report. So this shows all of our appropriations at the end of August. So our target that we are looking for, and I did truncate, I hit January through March just because I was running out of space and it was getting really, really small. Our target would be 66.7%, so our revenue, we have collected more than our target. We're at 68.2. You can see for our ed funds, some of our different categories are a little bit above that 66.7, but we also have several categories that are below the 66.7. We continue to just keep our eyes on each of these. Overall, our ed fund, we are at 62.2% at the end of January, so we are about 4.5% below where we would target, so that's a good thing. When we move into operations, operations, we have collected almost 80% of our revenue. Again, that will, once we get into December, that will be our next time that we collect revenue. We do have areas that we are over that 66.7% target, and just like in the ed fund, we have some that are over and we have some that are below. This one, the operations, we are at 69.8, so we are over the target where we would want to be. So that is something that is, you know, it's concerning. That's where, like I said, we are only going to be spending on needs, wants are going to have to wait. I also know, like I said, that we had things that we paid for in August that we would have thought that we would pay for them in September, so hopefully we'll see this start to come back down and be closer to that target. I did some projections of about how much we spend in operations each month, and when you look at how much we have left in our appropriations, we are going to be like almost right at that. So again, we're going to have to be frugal for the last three months of the year.
What is technology, service, supervision, and administration?
That includes the software that we use that monitors our buses, that does our routing, and it also includes bus aides salaries.
Okay. Just wondering, why is that number so high?
Because we spent the extra money on the technology, the new routing software.
Okay.
The insurance, that's because we made payments in August is why that's so much, I mean, it's 170.7%.
Correct.
And that number should come down because we won't have those same expenses the rest of the year.
Well, that should stay right there.
At 170.
Yes.
So if it's at 170, what occurred that made our insurance so much higher this year compared to what we were?
Well, over the last couple of years, we've had some claims on our insurance that caused our property insurance to go up. Like I said, it was about $28,000 more this year than last year.
I noticed there's a line for monitoring services for transportation. Is that something different than what the technology, service, supervision, and administration was? Because it's got a high...
Transportation monitoring services, that's what you asked about, correct?
Yes. Is that something different than the one we just talked about?
No, that's the one I think you just asked about.
No, before I asked about technology, service, supervision, and administration.
Oh, okay. Technology, service, supervision, and administration. That is if we just have technology, you know, something at the district level that we need to pay for. No, but it's where he will come from next year, so.
Any other questions? Let me get back. Okay. Trying to get back to my... All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The consent agenda passes. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, October 21st, 2024, here at Wabash City Hall at 6 o'clock PM. There's some items of communication. There's no old business, new business. We have the Wabash High School Student Council update. Welcome.
Well, to start off, we'll do a little introduction. Trevor Heron, student body president.
Hi, Trevor. Student body vice president.
I'm Maya Howard, junior class president.
And I'm Bridger Bailey, junior class treasurer.
So we had a very busy last month for student council. We both had homecoming and harvest ball happen around in the same month kind of timeline. We had a very successful homecoming with our float designs, which even though it was very windy that day, we had our parade, very successful. A lot of kids got a lot of candy, so I'm happy for them. My niece got to participate in that, and she got to take a little bit of home winter. Our hallway designs went very well. I'm very happy with every single one of our student council members that took the weekend before, doing their, on their own time, putting that stuff together. Very successful. Greta France and Eli Edmund were crowned our homecoming queen and king, so very good there. Our harvest ball was this past weekend. Our theme was "All That in Class," and I can say it was pretty classy. A lot of good music, a lot of good fun. Everyone enjoyed themselves. We're looking forward to our fish food drive, which will be happening on, trying to skip over there. I guess I didn't finish, oh, October 28th and November 1st. The week of that, our fish food drive, some background on that is we select some days, and we say we're going to accept some items on this day, and it goes towards points. It's kind of a bit of competition between individuals, so we'll be doing that then. We're bringing something kind of new this year. It's called Powder Puff, so we're going to do a ladies' black football game.
Now, wait a minute. Powder puff has been a thing. Did that go away?
It went away. We are bringing it back.
It has?
Yes. We're bringing it back. We have a new purpose. Our goal is we're going to have a door price of $6, and that is going to go directly to fish. So it's happening on October 23rd, and that is the Wednesday of the week. We've already gotten some early planning of getting our teams together. We're going to have, I think I have up there 35 student participants, and then we're going to have four coaches. Those four coaches is Katie Carmichael, Trevor Bunch, RJ Worley, and Gage, Wednesday's name, Simons. He's new this year. They are all four football, senior football players. I thought it would be kind of cool, they have an opportunity to coach a team themselves. So two of them will coach our upperclassmen, and two of them will coach our underclassmen. Right now, we're working on getting some more underclassmen, so if any of you haven't known any underclassmen that are looking for something to do on that day, I highly encourage you, encourage them to participate.
Hey, athletics. So, senior night was last Monday, ended with a tie, 1-1. The first round of sectionals will be this Wednesday at McConaughey. For girls soccer, 9-6 overall in the season, and then first round of sectionals is tomorrow night at Alumni Field. Boys cross country, they won for the third consecutive year TRC this weekend, or like past weekend at Manchester. The sectionals will be two Saturdays, in two Saturdays, October 19th at Manchester, and then girls cross country placed fourth at regional, or not regionals, conference, and sectionals will be October 19th at Manchester as well.
One of our football team lost 6-40 at North Buster, but they were very excited about their senior night against Whitco on October 18th. Our boys tennis team lost their sectional 2-3 at Rochester, and they all received IHSA champion of high school sports pins for going above and beyond off the court. The girls golf team ended their season finishing 12th at the Noble Hoff Regional Competition and shot their second most overall team score this season. And then the volleyball team is 18-6 in the season, and they're matched tomorrow at Manchester.
For clubs and organizations, this year so far, prom committee sent out an email to seniors, and they voted on the theme of midnight masquerade for prom, and we're in the early planning stages of prom and ordering decorations. And this year, we have a new club, which is Apache Way Club, and students have been brainstorming ideas for ways they can help at school, and they've created banners for before the game, before the football games. And they've also started bulletin boards with motivational quotes for anyone that needs them. And we've also started flower drops, and this is for teacher, for students who, okay. For teachers, teachers whose students, they need a pick-me-up. And then at Key Club, they've been brainstorming ways to volunteer in the community, and for student safety council, they've also been brainstorming and planning events as well, and we have started lockdown and weather drills, and those will finish up over fall break or after fall break.
So some other things to note, this Wednesday, we are having the SATs, or PSATs or SATs, so we will be having that this Wednesday. We have no school on Thursday, so we do get a little brain break after the SATs. That's due to a PD day. And then fall break is next week, and hopefully everyone gets some good deserved rest, and we come back to recharge for the year.
We have approximately 140 days left.
Is there any questions? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, approve the following as substitute coordinators for OJ Neighbors for the 2024-2025 school year. One, Brody Cook, from August 7th, 2024 to October 7th, 2024, and Kelly Springer, beginning October 8th, 2024.
So moved.
Discussion.
Mrs. Springer will take over these responsibilities of securing subs for the teachers at OJ. Mr. Cook was doing it to start the year until now, so they're going to split the first semester stipend. So Mrs. Springer will get $1,200 for, starting now, for the rest of the year, and Mr. Cook will get $300 for the first two months.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Item C, approve the following as homebound instructors. Sarah Cole to provide homebound services to a WMS student for two hours per week at her hourly rate of $48.06, beginning September 12th, 2024, for 45 days until the next case conference committee meeting. And two, Amy Oswald to provide homebound services to a WHS student for one hour per week at her hourly rate of $37.48, beginning October 1st, 24, until December 1st, 24.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Both of these requests were made as a result of a case conference committee and are part of the student's IEP, so I recommend that the board approve both of these requests.
Are there any questions?
I have a quick question. Just, when do we pay these out? Are they paid at the end? Are they paid throughout?
They turn hours in each payroll.
Okay, so if it's from, in this case, Amy Oswald, October 1st through December 1st?
She would just turn in her hours for each week, and that would be added to her check.
To her biweekly check?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
All those in favor of approving the instructors, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Item D, approve the following transfers of classified staff. Amber Golub from paraprofessional at LHC to executive assistant at the central office for 40 hours per week at a rate of $16 an hour, beginning October 8th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Golub will take over as the central office executive assistant, and Ms. Kugler will transition into the payroll slash HR role. Mrs. Kugler will train Mrs. Golub for this week, and then Mrs. Kugler will then begin training and taking over payroll. So this week will be the last week that Mrs. Huff gets the extra stipend for doing both accounts payable and payroll. She's on vacation next week, and then when she comes back, she will begin training Mrs. Kugler.
Questions from the board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Item E, accept resignations from the following classified staff. One, Lanay Bruning as paraprofessional at OJ Neighbors effective September 20th, 2024, and Melissa Crace as preschool paraprofessional at LHC effective October 11th, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
We'd like to thank both of these ladies for their time and service to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor of accepting the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Item F, approve recommendation to hire the following classified staff. Evaya Mettler as preschool paraprofessional at LHC at a rate of $11 per hour, beginning October 8th, 2024, pending background check.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Mettler will take the paraposition at LH that Mrs. Golub filled. We're especially excited about this hire, as Ms. Mettler is a Wabash graduate and went through our education professions program that is taught at LH by Mrs. Zennyard.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Item G, approve the following for athletics for 2024 through 2025. Volleyball volunteer, Emma Tracy.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
I know you may think it's funny, there's only two weeks of the season left. Why would we approve a volunteer? But not only can she help the next couple of weeks, as most of you know, sports goes year-round, and you cannot help at open facilities unless you're an approved coach. So this will also allow her to continue the rest of the school year to help, once they have open gyms and the winter in the spring.
All those in favor of approving the hire, or the volunteer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. H, approve superintendent goals for the 2024 through 2025 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So we will start, I'm just going to go over each one real quick. There are three goals that I have developed for this year. The first one is to develop an updated Wabash City Schools strategic plan. I think it's been over 10 years since the district has gone through strategic planning, so obviously we need to update that. Also, in those 10 years, there's been no review of progress or updates to the plan. So going through this process will allow us to set goals and, set measurable goals and create a roadmap for continuous improvement. The plan is that it will be a five-year plan that, starting next school year, where do we want to be five years from now? Goal number two is to develop a plan for increased academic growth across the district. We continue to be below state and national averages on several of our assessments, so I will work with administrators to go through their data, look at where our students are at, and then developing professional development throughout the rest of this year to ensure that our teachers have the skills that they need to help increase student achievement. And then goal three, continue to improve our financial position. We know that over the past two years, we have made some improvements, but declining enrollment and tax caps and reduced funding from the state is going to hinder us. So just continue to grow my capacity in school finance and develop a plan to reduce expenditures while keeping our current programs and offerings.
Questions from the board? All those in favor of approving superintendent goals, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Items from superintendent.
First, last Tuesday was our fall count day. It was on October 1st. Our enrollment was down by 38 students from last fall to this fall. We were at 1411 last fall. We were at 1373. The biggest drop was at Carpenter. Our kindergarten class is only 83, which was 28 fewer than last year. OJ had one grade level that went up and three that went down, so a net loss of 10 over those four grade levels. The middle school was even, and the high school was up five students over their four grade levels. So once our enrollment is certified, the demographic study that we had completed will be updated. Dr. Brudvik will be able to get our most recent enrollment numbers and then go through and adjust her study. That's going to be really good information for us, because we know that we are, our county is an aging county. We're declining in population, and that's going to affect us. It's going to affect our enrollment. So I think getting that report, sharing that with the board and the community, so they can see it's going to help us plan in the future. Our fall sports are wrapping up. I've been able to attend and enjoy a couple of our senior nights, and I always enjoy looking at the student board, seeing our kids from when they started, as little ones up to varsity athletes, and I want to wish our teams good luck as they head into sectionals. This Thursday is our fall parent-teacher conferences. Pre-K through 5th grade will have scheduled conferences from 9:00 AM until 7:00 PM. And then 6th grade through 12th grade will have PD from 9:00 until noon, and then they'll have drop-in style conferences until 7:00 PM. So we hope to see a lot of our families out on Thursday. And like our student council said, next week is fall break. We hope our students, teachers, and families have a relaxing break, and if anyone has plans to head south, especially to Florida, I hope that the coming days are not as dire as it looks like it could be.
Thank you. Items from chief operations officer.
Couple things. First of all, after two long years, today our elevators are opening back up. We got the permits done, or the inspections done on Friday. They told us we could start using them. It has been a long road, between not being able to get things, between having to do, fix some things in the elevators we didn't expect, between the company firing the guy who gave us the first load. I mean, the whole thing has been a long road, but it's nice to have them back. I'm sure it's going to help the high school, because I know we have some students who need it. And certainly, the cafeteria ladies are very excited about having the elevators back, so back up and working. At homecoming last week, I just want to say congratulations to Josh Long. He was named Mr. Alumni. For those who don't know, Josh spent 15 or 16 years when we had grass on the football field. Mowing, lining, painting, he did it all. He took care of the field mostly late at night when people weren't watching. He's coached a lot of youth sports, so that was good for him. I know the kids mentioned our cross-country team who won the conference. Our boys' cross-country team has won the conference seven of the last eight years. They actually dominated it Saturday. They won by 50 points. We had six of the top 10 runners. We had one, Jonas Church was the winner of the race, and then we also had three, five, eight, nine, and 10. So, boys did a great job, and our girls finished fourth, which was good for them too. And then last but not least, I know they also mentioned that our boys tennis team, I awarded them pins, the IHSA pins, but the reason why is we got a long letter from the athletic director at Peru that was sent to us and to the IHSA, complimenting Coach Mattern and the boys on how they handled a special needs student who was at the sectional. I mean, it went into details about how the team let him sit with them and talk to him, and how nice they were to him, and how the AD tried to go get him away, and this Coach Mattern said, "No, no, it's okay. We got it." He said a few humorous things as they were leaving, invited him to his birthday party. But he went out of his way to write this letter about how great our kids behaved and how nice they were. And so I thought it was a great opportunity to award them with those pins, so I called the Peru AD and told him I was going to do that, and he said, "You make sure you give Coach Mattern one too." And so we did that last week, took a picture. If you saw the picture, gave them all sportsmanship pins, but just a great job by our kids. You know, they got beat 3-2, but they still, you know, are out there being good kids and nice to people, and doing all the things we want, doing things the right way, and so just hats off to them. And so I was glad they mentioned it too.
Thank you. Items from administrators.
Thanks to our student council kids for coming in. They kind of steal my thunder most of the time. But I will add, I'm really pleased that we have two of the four Lilly finalists. So we'll see what happens. They did those interviews. I don't know if I'm at liberty to say their names, but fingers crossed we get another Lilly winner this year. That would be transformational for one of our kids.
Thank you. Other items from visitors? Items from board members? Start at Rod.
Few things. The PSAT, SAT on Wednesday, I think I say this every year, but I think it's great that we offer that opportunity to our students. It's nice that we can set the...
It's, it's nice that we can set the day aside, give all of our students the opportunity to take that test here locally and not have to find another place to go to, to, to do that. So appreciate the school doing that. The fish food drive, I know that goes back at least 40 years, if not longer. That's a wonderful thing that our school does for the community because that's a, that's a definite need. And then I just want to commend our school board. I know somebody may mention it later on, but I know you guys attended the ISBA School Board Conference. I wasn't able to attend this year. But the entire time that I have been on the board, we have had a majority of our school board members attend that event every year. And I think it's important. I think that it's, it's a great thing that our board is engaged and are, is attending that and learning what's, what's taking place. So I wasn't able to attend, but congratulations. And I'm proud of to serve with you guys. That's all I have.
Kristin, I second the PSAT SAT thing. It's pretty great. Thank you guys for coming. And I did want to give another shout out to Jonas Church, didn't know he was getting two today. We had an, a competition open to anyone that wanted to participate for Bash Bags to help us create a new logo. We had a couple of entries and Jonas's logo was chosen of all the entries that were sent to Bash Bags. So his design will become our new logo, which is very exciting. So I just wanted to say congratulations to him.
I was able to attend the Big Idea Event in September where the second Harvest Food Bank comes in and to see families. We had a, a pretty good turnout with families coming in, shopping the event. So the next one is October 30th, sorry, October 23rd. And I would encourage anybody to come. It's like, it's a great event. So I was happy to be a part of that.
Okay, thank you. And I have some library news. We have our ribbon cutting and grand reopening, November 15th. I believe it starts at 1 o'clock, right?
It is definitely November 15th. I don't know what time it's, I do know it's that day though.
So it's been a long time coming and I'm sure the staff is super excited, as is the, the board. So ready for that. With that, I'll adjourn. Thank you.